I call this meeting the Conley Independent School District to order, let the record show that their board members is present. The notice to this meeting has been, uh, hold on. This meeting has been duly called and the notice to this meeting has been posted in accordance with thanks to open meetings act, Texas Code Charter 551.
Our first item is invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Kathy Kober. She would please stand to join us.
Father, we thank you for this season. We thank you for this wonderful holiday, Christmas season. We ask your blessing, continued blessing on our district, Lord, as we move forward in these days. We ask your protection and favor over our students and their families and our staff. As we enter this season, Lord, your protection and watching over each of us as we enjoy this season. We thank you for this evening. Thank you for this night. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good job. I can hear it when we tell you, "I'm here." Great job.
Okay, we're going to begin this evening with our recognition, and we are going to go ahead and recognize our junior high students first because I understand they have a band concert going on right down the hall, so.
I'm going to go ahead and call up our first student, Josiah Stevens. Come on up, sir. Josiah is a fantastic student and a wonderful young man. He does everything you could ask for every day. He studies hard, he works hard in the classroom, he's respectful and kind and polite, and we are proud to have him as a cadet. So this is Josiah Stevens. He is a seventh grader. If you want. He is very talented, so now he is running to band. What instrument is he playing? Saxophone. Saxophone, there you go. Good job. And then Simone Tobias could not be here this evening, but she is another wonderful student that we are blessed to have at the junior high. I'm going to call up our teacher of the month, Ms. Elasia Cotton. So I will tell you that when you're in the hiring process, at least once or twice a year, you are blessed with someone that you just know in the interview is going to be an amazing teacher. And so she is one of our teachers that we knew immediately, she's going to be a great teacher, and she has. Every time you walk into her classroom, her kids are on target, they are learning. Every adult that goes in there has the same comment, "She is amazing." And I go, "Yes, she is. We are blessed to have her. She is a great addition to our sixth grade team. She teaches English." So this is Ms. Elasia Cotton. And our last employee of the month was Tyrell Hackworth, and he is in our power program. I know he's running concession stand. He was going to be over here, but if he steps in, we'll announce him here in a little bit. So thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Now for our early childhoods here, Ms. Bowley.
Okay, I have some awesome people to recognize. I'm going to start with Ms. Jordan Calabrese as our first student of the month. Come on up, Jordan. So she was nominated by her teacher, Ms. White, who's here to support her tonight because she is always kind, eager to learn, positive in class. Ms. White says she thinks outside the box, she's super creative and driven, she even sets goals for herself as a kindergartner and reaches those, is a good friend to everyone. And I asked her what she is proud of herself for learning, and she said she has learned how to put the letters together to read words. And her favorite thing about school is that she gets to learn, and she wants to be that teacher when she grows up. She is awesome.
Can you see a lot of students?
One, two, three. Congratulations.
All right. Okay, Mr. Daniel Johnson, come on up.
Daniel was actually in our building in our daycare, and so I got to know him before he was our student and knew he was awesome because he was always so polite in the hallway. So he was nominated by his teacher, Ms. Jacobo, who's also here tonight, and she said that he is always wanting to learn more and is very curious about the world. He's very bright, super sweet, he makes sure to comfort his classmates when they are sad and helps them out when they need it. His personality and smile lights up their classroom. And then I asked him today, and he said he is very proud that he has learned how to balance things in math, they have been working with scales. He said he loves that Ms. Jacobo has taught him so many things, and he really wants to be Spider-Man when he grows up, but if that doesn't work out, he would like to be a firefighter or police officer. And Chad is one of our junior high teachers, Mr. Johnson's up there. We'll do it like this. We have some good faces.
It's good profession, you know. One, two, three.
Our staff member of the month is Ms. Karla Salazar. Come on up. Ms. Salazar works with Michelle in her classroom as a parent, and she's awesome. And Michelle said about her that she comes, cares about helping students learn, she builds positive relationships with students and staff, she's always looking for ways to help and keeps a positive attitude, she's full of joy and shares that with everyone around her. She is a gift to our classroom, and I would agree. She's just one of these people that's just professional, loving, kind, and just amazing person to have on our campus. So we're very grateful for you.
One, two, three. Congratulations.
And then Ms. Kelsey Jacobo is our teacher of the month. I could go on and on about Kelsey, too. She is like, I'm not even going to read. She's just like one of the most gifted teachers that I've ever encountered naturally, just intuitively knows how to help her kids learn. She's actually been a nice teacher. She is highly professional. I know that anytime I walk in her room, she's on it, her kids are on it, her parent is on it. They are just amazing and produce amazing results, which we see in her data. So she is a tremendous asset to our campus, and I'm super proud of you.
One, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We have another recognition for this month, Ms. Lloyd Tressel, if you would like to come up.
We recognize our school psychologist, Ms. Emily Sample. Ms. Sample, she came to be with us about eight years ago as an intern, and she stayed. And so we've been able to keep her all this time. I do get calls from time to time, directors asking, you know, "Do y'all even have a school psychologist?" And it's like, "Yes, and you can't have her." And so she does a lot for the students and families of Conley ISD. She wants to make sure that everything is perfect for them with, whether it's an evaluation or just psychological services. I know I read the other day that I think one in five kids are going to experience a mental health crisis at some point in their education. And so it takes all of us, but certainly our school psychologists. So thank you, Ms. Emily.
One, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. More than anything, I want to thank the parents of our students of the month that are here because one of the reasons that they are so successful is because of all of the backing that they get at home from their parents. And I have to say, those kindergartners are learning a lot this year in the classrooms that we've visited and stuff. It's very exciting to hear some of the things that they are, that they are talking about. And I mean, that just goes all the way up to the other grade levels as well. So you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. However, many a times, that's when people depart after their doctorations. So we are not going to be offended. However, you are more than welcome to stick around and listen to our 900-page policy that I'm giving to them tonight, as well as other things. But thank you, and thank you for supporting your students.
Thank y'all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is open for discussion, and I checked just as we were turning the meeting. So after that, see, next item is consider approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the monthly financial report for October 2025 and November 2025, as well as approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting on October 20th, 2025, special meeting on October 20th, 2025, and special meeting on November 19th, 2025.
Any questions? I make a motion to approve the financial report for October 2025 and November 2025, minutes from the regular board meeting on October 20th, special meeting on October 20th, 2025, special meeting on November 19th, 2025.
Stephen Carter made a motion, and Diane Davis seconded to approve the monthly financial report for October, November, and November of 2025, and the minutes of the regular board meeting held on October 20th, 2025, and special meetings on October 20th and November 19th, 2025.
Motion seconded for any further discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Keith Black. Heather Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter. Aye. Ms. Kathy Kober.
Aye.
Danny Rains. All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
Our next item is consider impossible action to accept the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas report. This is the report that Mr. Timmons presented in this special meeting.
Any further questions? Need a motion?
Danny Rains made a motion, Heather Johnson seconded, to accept the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas report.
Motion second carries. Any further discussion? Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Keith Black. Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter. Aye. Ms. Kathy Kober.
Aye.
Mr. Rains.
Aye.
All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
The next item is, I have already emailed this to you in a PDF. This is really a report only. It is also attached here in this board agenda, and this is your TASB policy update number 126. It is a total of 1,590 pages of your pleasurable reading, which is why I sent it to you a month ago to go through and review. I'm just presenting it to you officially during this meeting. We will actually vote to accept, or if there are any qualifications that need to be made to any of these local wording of any of the local policies. Reminder, legal is all of the things that are instituted, all of the sweeping changes from the most recent legislative session, and then 126 is our local policies that also follow those legal. So if you do not have the email where I attached it, here it is attached in your board agenda. So it takes a lot of data and a long time to read. So that is report only. The next item on the agenda is our accountability update. Ms. Burnett could not be here this evening, so she asked me to share with all of you. This is the latest edition of the Cadet Digest that goes out monthly to all of our staff members, and it just has all of the data on the walkthroughs and so forth like that. This one also includes our comparison of our STAR interim testing at all grade levels. If anyone wants a copy, I know all staff members have already received it in the email. But as you know, we took kind of a practice STAR, I guess you would say, in November, just to kind of assess where our students were. Knowing, being full well aware, we have not taught all of the content as far as on the STAR test, but how are they doing on all of the standards that we have taught? I had her put because a great deal of the discussion is around the number of our students or the percentage of our students who are at the meets or masters level, not the approaches, although that is considered quote, well, passing or good enough as far as for them and showing that they made progress. But we really are focusing on have they met the standard for that grade level or exceeded with the masters? And I also, in the last column, had her put the May cohort of 2025. So you can kind of see with mine, so if it says it out next to third grader, those are now fourth graders this year. So if you want to compare on the second sheet that I gave you, if you want to compare with that, you're kind of like drawing a diagonal line. So looking at currently, our fourth grade RLA, we've got 36% are at meets and masters, and at the end of the year, we only had 33%. Same as far as like with our fourth grade, or our fourth grade really doesn't have a whole lot of comparison because it's third graders that'll take it. But our current fifth graders, I should say, are already outperforming where they were last year, just as our fifth graders are outperforming where they were. And the trend, you can kind of see that we are already moving upward. Now, the one caveat that I would like to give, because a lot of people look at seventh grade and they're like, "Oh, why did that go down?" When they start getting into seventh grade, especially with their math score, that is when our seventh grade students who are in advanced math, they actually take the eighth grade STAR test. So you take all of your advanced kiddos out, and they are taking the eighth grade STAR. And then all of your eighth graders who are in that advanced math actually take the algebra one. So that's why there is a bit of discrepancy. So we had a lot of growth as far as in our third through fifth grade math, a lot of growth as far as in our fifth grade RLA, that was pretty amazing, as well as our eighth grade math. We've identified a high needs area, and I know that there's been a lot of discussion with Ms. Burnett, the instructional coaches, Dr. Hancock, the principals, as far as the interventions that we need to move forward with and what we are going to do between now and testing time. I know that Mr. Shaw is currently working on revising even his instructional schedule during the day to allow time for intervention to happen during the school day. So we're using a lot of this information as far as to drive what are our next steps and where do we need to focus. So that just kind of gives you an update of where we are. So some very impressive growth for only being in November, so we hope to see a whole lot more moving forward. I just saw someone walk in, so if we want to pause and go back to recognition real quickly.
So we have a wonderful power team on our campus, and they are amazing. These gentlemen build fantastic relationships with our kids that make all the difference when kids are having a bad day or tough times, whatever it may be. This is Mr. Hackworth. Tyrell builds relationships with every kid he runs into. Like this morning, I'm going to give the example. So I had a kid in my office, and I saw his face pop up in the window. And I said, "Oh." And he came in, he goes, "I got him." And I know he's got him. He's got him every day. He cares and loves for these kids. He really makes a difference in their lives and provides a lot of support. So we just wanted to thank you for everything you did.
One, two, three. Congratulations.
I just saw him walk in, and I didn't want to forget.
Next item.
All right, next item is report only of bilingual English as a second language program waiver. As you know, we are required to offer bilingual classrooms. However, if we are not able to secure a teacher, we can file a waiver to, to the state as far as, hey, we looked for teachers, but we were not able to secure one. So this is the waiver that was actually filed. This year, I am very proud to say that we actually have a bilingual K-10 teacher. I visited her classroom last week. A lot of little cute smiling faces in there, but then they are learning a lot as far as in that room. But our class size actually for bilingual students is down this year. But we will continue to file a waiver as long as we meet that criteria to that in 250 more students at that grade level. All right. Any questions about that? Next item is report only on the gifted and talented program review of Ms. Shulock.
All right, so part of the gifted and talented state program plan is that I have to update just once a year, the stat D4 has to be told that the GT state plan requires that we share information that we gain through our evaluation process. And it's 1.5 in the state plan. Basically, it just says that we have to evaluate, evaluate once a year, and we have to share. And so we did do the evaluation. We had parents come to the meeting, students and staff members, all of our GT teachers, and also just staff members from campuses that are not, do not have our GT kids. And really, the only thing that they told us is that they would like some of the surveys we worked that we send to make them more user-friendly. Not only other part of the evaluations that they shared is that perhaps we could work on trying to have events that are just for GT parents. So just for, this is not part that we have to report, but just so you know that K through five, we are using a GT pull-out program. Six through eight, we have a pull-out program every other Friday, and then at high school, we also offer a pull-out program, but also a lot of those students are having their needs met by all the extracurricular and UIL, dual credit, different things that they're involved in. So at K, we use, we use mentoring mind, I'm sorry, mind missions, and also the curriculum that we use is the Texas Performance Standard Project, which is different projects that TEA has put out on the website that can meet the criteria to use with our GT students. And I think in the board package, we also attach the procedures guidelines. Any question? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is consider impossible action to approve the purchase of library materials. As you know, with the most recent legislative session, there were some great changes as far as how library materials are procured. So I am going to have Dr. Hancock review it with you as far as our process, and then you can see a list of all of the books that are on.
So Mr. Donaldson made us a lovely library page, and our junior high was the first to come up with a list of books. So we posted those on our Conley library page for 30 days for public comment. There's a Google form for anyone to, to submit commentary if they are a community member, staff member, parent. And so on the particular list, you have four years that were not any comments. So we are asking that those be approved for purchase for the junior high.
I make motion to approve the purchase of library material as presented.
Stephen Carter made the motion, Heather Johnson seconded to approve the purchase of library materials as presented.
Motion seconded for any further discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Keith Black.
Aye.
Ms. Heather Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter. Aye. Ms. Kathy Kober.
Aye.
Mr. Danny Rains.
Aye.
All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
Next item is consider impossible action to approve the 10 additional non-business days on our 2026 calendar. As you may be aware, that when someone files a public information request, we have 10 days to respond. That gets complicated as far as whenever we have breaks, such as week-long breaks at Thanksgiving or Christmas, sometimes that significantly cuts into our response time. So they have allowed us to designate 10 days in the calendar here that are in addition to federal and state holidays. Mr. Donaldson is the one who generally responds to all of these information requests. So he and I sat down and we kind of looked, took a look at a calendar and took a few days out of each one of those breaks to ensure that we would have at least five business days in order to gather the information requested and provided. So our additional days are listed as far as on the board background, but we have March 12th and March 13th, which is during spring break, July 8th, 9th, and 10th, which is that week of the Fourth of July, November 25th, because amazingly, they have Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving as a state holiday. And then we have December 29th, 30th, and 31st, as far as on next year's calendar. So we just ask that you approve these as our 10 additional non-business days.
Business days. Need a motion?
Heather Johnson made a motion, Keith Black seconded, to approve the 10 additional non-business days to the 2026 calendar as presented.
Motion seconded for any further discussion. If not, Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Keith Black.
Aye.
Ms. Heather Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter. Aye. Ms. Kathy Kober.
Aye.
Mr. Danny Rains.
Aye.
All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
So the next item is consider impossible action on the ATMS easement. We have been kind of going back and forth with them. Of course, the holiday break did not help the cause much because we weren't here, or they were traveling, or we were out of pocket. So we kind of had some difficulties as far as making connections and getting everything finalized. I know that they are really ready to move forward with it. So really, what we would like to change this motion to is to give the authority to me to negotiate with them because in the end, they can go by other means in order to obtain easement to this property. So we don't want to belabor this on, because we're about to enter into the Christmas break as well, to where people are going to be out of pocket, but I know that they are wanting to get this project started. But the gentleman we've been working with, he's very easy to work with and, you know, has most definitely taken all of our thoughts and everything into consideration. Now, he did ask why we thought that little bit of property was worth so much money. And I just said, "I was hoping you would take the whole thing." But, you know, but they understand, they've also had the value of it estimated, and as I do, I think that they do with all of the property, if they do have to go another round. So that is what I would ask that you change the motion to, because that will allow us to get this settled and so that they can start their procedures.
I make a motion to authorize Ms. Jill Bollberg the authority to make further contract needs with ATMS Energy Easement.
Motion.
Second?
Yes.
Second.
Stephen Carter made the motion, Diane Davis seconded, for the board to authorize Jill Bollberg to negotiate the ATMS easement. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I want to know the terms, the terms of the whole terms.
It's going to have to go back to the board. Motion seconded for any further discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Keith Black.
Aye.
Ms. Heather Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter. Aye. Mr. Ms. Kathy Kober.
Aye.
Mr. Danny Rains. Sorry. All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
Next item is consider impossible action on the City of Lacy Lake Water Bill discrepancy for the 24 to 25 year. Maybe I thought it was a match. Okay. Okay, I couldn't get mine together. So we actually sat down with the city manager and the secretary to review the water bill as far as to get an explanation on the differences that were recognized in the rounding. Those of us in the room who were not mathematicians, it took us a time or two of actually reviewing the information. We finally caught on. Mr. Timmons caught on quicker than the rest of us and had to provide tutorials, but we made it. So, and Mr. Carter was actually in that meeting as well. Mr. Timmons, is there anything else that you would like to add to this?
Just that Ms. Kuzmeric and Ms. Isabel and getting those, one of the things that we had talked about in that meeting, once we understood, was just the fiduciary responsibility we have to our stakeholders. And so we needed it, we needed the information we were given, but in a little bit different way so that our auditors, when this year's audit comes up, so that we can show, you know, just exactly we have sent a large check coming out at one time to an entity that we typically don't send a check that to. But they were very gracious, sent it to way more. Our auditors liked plenty of stuff to look at. Our auditors liked plenty of stuff to look at, so thank y'all very much for that.
Yes, thank y'all. I make a motion to approve the payment of the City of Lacy Lakeview of $50,687.61 to settle the 2024-2025 water bill discrepancies.
Stephen Carter made the motion. Heather Johnson seconded to approve the payment to City of Lacy Lakeview in the amount of $50,687.61 to settle the 24-25 water bill discrepancies.
Motion seconded on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Keith Black.
Aye.
Ms. Heather Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter, aye. Ms. Kathy Coker.
Aye.
Mr. Danny Rains. All voting for, motion carries, next item.
Next item is consider impossible action to approve the food service co-op agreement.
Oh, sorry, that's. Oh, I would tell them, thank you.
And thank you for working with us on getting the sewer and the meters that we no wonder use off of there, that we didn't even know that we still have.
Since we went self-op, Region 12 has told us that one of the best ways to go about procuring the food and all of the supplies that you need is to join Food Service Co-op. The one that we have traditionally invented is Region 10. It's amazing. We are actually in the process of going through another cafeteria TDA audit, because they like to do a check-in after your first year of self-op, to make sure you're doing everything right. And I called them twice on Friday, and they answered all of my questions both times. They have all the documentation, everything, and not to mention just the procurement piece of us not having to go out for contracts for every little thing has been huge. So I would strongly recommend, please, that we approve the Food Service Co-op agreement for '26, '27.
Need a motion?
Stephen Carter made the motion.
Heather Johnson.
Oh, Heather, sorry.
You second. Keith Black.
Motion was made by Heather Johnson, seconded by Keith Black, to approve the food service co-op agreement as presented.
Motion seconded on floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Keith Black.
Aye.
Ms. Heather Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter, aye. Ms. Kathy Coker. Mr. Danny Rains. Motion second, oh, no, sorry. All voting for, motion carries, next item.
Next item is our roofing project update. This is a report only, Mr. Timmons.
I gave you a couple of the attachments, the daily reports, and then some of the field observations. The short story is, the elementary is done. We're just waiting for Armco to bring their folks out and give us one last blessing over before we pay the final bill to Techline. And then my understanding is that the roof company, the Roof Lakeo or Roof Lakeo Roof, the other group that has come in is doing a good job as well. Their observations have gone really well, and they are right at the halfway mark with the end of the year. Other than that, there's really not a whole lot to report. Except that Jeremy, I'm sure you did speak with Mr. Woski at Armco, who's going to attempt, the last time we heard, if they were going to be able to loop the police department and child nutrition office roof into this claim, which it desperately needs it. Yeah. It's almost got a skylight. We've got to have it a skylight. So anyway, they are still working on that. There is a chance we might extend into that project while we've gotten up here.
Awesome. Next item.
Our next item is consider approval of resolution of votes cast to elect directors for the McLennan County Appraisal District. There are several attachments on your board agenda. Conley ISD actually has 89 votes that we can distribute to whoever we would like as far as to sit on the appraisal district board of directors. And there are three people that are running or up for the seat. It is a Jim Smith, a Jim Patton, and Dwayne Moss are the three.
Anybody know any of them?
I don't know any of them.
So you do? Which one? Do we want to put all our 89 on that one? Or equally distribute? Everybody in the group? I guess I can't pull the board, but I'm just.
I was about to say. So we can divide up our votes however we want. If there is not someone that we know and have a relationship with as far as, you know, ultimate confidence that they're going to get all 89, just to kind of give you an idea, if you look at the voting entity entitlements, 89 is a drop in the bucket compared to the number of votes that some of the other surrounding entities get. So they, and they may or may not make a difference, but we also know that sometimes a tie is a loss, so every vote does count, and I will let you say that, that's how you vote, so.
So we will equally distribute 30, 30, 29, and it is written on the actual ballot that we're supposed to turn in. So I make a motion to approve the election, the resolution of votes to cast elect 30 votes to Dwayne Moss, 30 votes to Jim Patton, and 29 votes to Jim Smith for the McLennan County Appraisal District for the years 2025, 2026.
So Stephen Carter made the motion, and Heather Johnson seconded to approve the resolution of votes cast to 30 votes to Dwayne Moss, 30 votes to Jim Patton, 29 to Jim Smith for the McLennan County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the 25, '26. That's a mouthful.
Yes, it is. Motion seconded on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Keith Black.
Aye.
Ms. Heather Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter, aye. Ms. Kathy Coker. Danny Rains abstained. Five, four, one abstention, one absent. Motion carries, next item.
Next item is to set the date, time, and location for the regular board meeting. There are two options, well, there's really three options, I guess, if you look at it. January the 12th, which is actually the, our staff comes back on January the 5th, so it would be the next Monday, pretty quick turnaround to get the agenda out by Tuesday afternoon. The next Monday is actually the 19th, which is Martin Luther King Day, so we do not have school. I don't mind coming up here for a board meeting, but I think some of your other administrators might not like it, and I'm sure many of you have the day off as well. So then the next date after that would actually be January the 26th, so.
Yes, sir.
If I could be so bold as to request the 26th, that would help us on the audit.
Yeah.
Always make your request, sir.
Well, I will say, to get all of that done, if not, you're going to end up having another meeting on the 26th before that weekend.
We'll do it again, so do it one way or the other.
Do we need to have a special meeting for the audit prior to? Or they're just going to be here in?
To approve the AFR.
Okay.
Because we have to get it in by February 28th.
So we will need a special?
What day are y'all talking about doing?
On the 26th. To do the sixteenth.
Oh, no, no, you don't have to do a special. They can do this for the regular. I'm sorry.
All right. The next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. A reminder on here that you should have received an email from for cybersecurity training. It came through, it said it was from Iron Scale. I know some of you even sent an email that said, hey, is this legit or is it phishing? Nope, it's legit.
We scared to death.
And it is actually the training that you need to complete to make sure that you know what is legit and what is not. So if you have not completed it, please make sure that you log in according to that email to complete that training. If you have deleted it or it's gone, please let me know, and I can have Mr. Ty resend the information.
Do we have to send you your certificate?
Yes. Do you automatically get these certificates? Okay, you'll automatically get them, so no, you don't have to.
Thank you.
All right. The next thing is our enrollment and attendance. They are attached for November. We are looking at a 94.79 ADA for the month of, month of October. November, it was 94.45. This is the season that you start kind of seeing a decline in the ADA. You can hear my little cough, I did hit my blue shot, and, but there are a lot of places that you go when you see people, and, I mean, just even going into Walmart this morning at the last minute to get some cough medicine, I was like, oh, sure, that one, they're out of, that one, they're out of, that. That's a pretty good indicator. So take care of vitamin C in your Zing at this time of year. I know that even at the high school, they were sending reminders about if the kid has a fever, send them, make sure you're washing your hands, make sure that, you know, you're cleaning your surfaces, because we need to keep our kids as healthy as possible for the next couple of weeks as we enter into the Christmas break. So this week, and then moving into next, there are lots of events going on at school. I know tomorrow, we have an alumni soccer, we've got basketball that's going on, we've got some Christmas programs coming up, we've got Whoville celebration at the elementary next week, so if you will, just make sure that you review the flyover that goes out weekly, and they have it all listed there. If you want to show up wearing your funky socks tomorrow and go to one of the elementary camps, it's a trip.
I'm wearing mine right now, where are your clothes?
Yeah. All right, so that is all I have for the superintendent's report. We do have some employment that we need to go into process.
This board now adjourns to the executive session pursuant to the following sections of Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551.074, 551.072. At 7:12. Thank y'all so much.
All right, here we go.
We're back in session 8:04. I need a motion for resignations of personnel as presented.
Heather Johnson made the motion. Keith Lowry seconded to accept the resignation of personnel as presented.
Motion seconded on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Keith Black.
Aye.
Ms. Heather Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter, aye. Mr. Keith Lowry.
Aye.
Ms. Kathy Coker.
Aye.
Mr. Danny Rains.
Aye.
All voting for, motion carries, next item.
Consider employment, consider approval of employment of personnel as presented.
Need a motion?
Heather Johnson made the motion. Keith Lowry seconded to employ personnel as presented.
Motion seconded on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Keith Black.
Aye.
Heather, Ms. Heather Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter, aye. Mr. Keith Lowry.
Aye.
Ms. Kathy Coker.
Aye.
Mr. Danny Rains.
Aye.
All voting for, motion carries, need a motion for adjourn?
Danny Rains made the motion. Heather Johnson seconded to adjourn this meeting at 8:05 PM.
Motion seconded on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Diane Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Keith Black.
Aye.
Ms. Heather Johnson.
Aye.
Stephen Carter, aye. Mr. Keith Lowry.
Aye.
Ms. Kathy Coker.
Aye.
Mr. Danny Rains.
Aye.
All voting for, motion carries, meeting adjourned at 8:05 PM. Thank y'all, we got signature.